All good? Okay, great. All right, thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's work session. First up, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Sorry. Next up, we'll have our Audience of Citizens' public comment. Do I have to read the statement again, Mr. Scrocky, do you think, since, uh, okay?
Yes, please.
Since we just had everybody here. All right. "This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels and streamed live. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the Board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the Board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the Board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. As a reminder, the Audience of Citizens' portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters which are or may come before the Board. It is not designed for debate or discussion with the Board. When appropriate, individual school board directors may choose to respond to public comments that have been made once the Audience of Citizens' period has concluded, or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting." And this is in reference to Policy 903. So, we're gonna start with Mrs. Chapman, because she did sign up. Mrs. Chapman, did you want to make your public comment now?
Thank you. Rose Chapman, Lansdale Borough. You have a different format. I haven't talked before the Board for the, in forty years. My comments then were probably the same as they are now. There's always an increase in taxes. And I always speak for the young, starting out, and the elderly on fixed income. So, I started with the young, and now I'm at the other end of the spectrum. Wasn't too long ago that you could raise the taxes, 1.9, then it went to 2.3. This year, it's 4.1, and I don't know how those figures come about. On Election Day, in working outside, I met one of you on the Board and spoke about the increase, 'cause I thought it was rather hefty. And the comment was, "Well, you gotta raise this year." I was a little upset about that. So, my heating oil doubled at least twice, and I have two properties to buy oil for. Gas went up, food went up, insurance, restaurants, local and county taxes went up, and so I got a big increase in Social Security. I'll make it, you know, have no problem with that. Pardon me. I think this increase is one of the biggest ones we've had, possibly not. To hear that I gotta raise is a most audacious statement. There'll be a day when you will be on Social Security, maybe you'll understand. You're pouring money into the schools, the ratings are down, so I've read, teachers are leaving and going into corporate America. I could ask why. From what I've heard, there's a lack of respect with the students, and deplorable language is used. Heard that as well. Just keep adding more money to a broken system. Maybe you should start finding a way to repair our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chapman. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this point? Good evening, Mr. Altieri.
Vince Altieri, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. I wanna talk a little bit more about this high school project. First off, you know, I spend a lot of time either knocking on doors or getting to, out to community events and talking to people. And I wanna be clear about something, and I am not opposed to high school renovations and a potential high school project. And what I am opposed to, though, is I'm opposed to this DC politics about not telling the complete truth. And I believe the referendum is not the complete truth. And I'm gonna do my darnedest to make sure everybody that I speak to understands that. I told you folks a long time ago, don't ever underestimate the power of one, okay? When you, when, when the President of this Board didn't react to me in a timely manner, and I'm not gonna get back to that, okay? That's, that's for another day, and trust me, that will be another day, okay? But the fact, but the fact of the matter is, we need to bring this back to academic excellence, okay? And I've asked several times already, compare and contrast with other schools, not only public schools, but private schools, where their school rankings are, how well they're doing, before we're gonna put a billion dollars, and I'll keep on saying until someone would like to challenge me on it, okay, into a brand-new high school. Because you can't have one without the other. You said it in your own presentation, okay? So, talk to us about that. Talk to us about the decisions that the Board has made. And I keep on hearing about the fifth lowest taxes. So, I'll say it again, in case you haven't heard this from me. I moved here fifteen years ago, okay? And the reason why I moved here is because my wife is a schoolteacher, I respect her opinion, she raved about North Penn School District, and the rankings proved it, okay? I don't really know the answer to this question. I don't know what, where we ranked in terms of what our school, what our, what our tax ranking was fifteen years ago. I don't know if we were fifth, third, fourth, or five-hundredth, but our school rankings were great, okay? They're not there anymore. That's why I'm running for school board. It's about the pursuit of academic excellence. Talk about it. Stop giving us these mirages about other different things. Don't tell me that a billion-dollar high school renovation project, and let's face it, when you started that presentation off with, with ed- with beautiful young children, okay? Who doesn't want something new? Everybody wants something new. Every child wants something new, I should say, okay? And then you go on, and you talk about, "Well, we can put this on the referendum." Now, be ethical about it. Don't be irresponsible. Tell the community the truth. Talk about the school rankings, okay? And let's have a frank conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Altieri. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time?
Pauline Braccio, Townes, Township. I had emailed everybody on the Board, and I think Mr. Scrocky as well, several articles about transgendering and how it is a horrible thing to do to a person, let alone a child. And I would like, if possible, to have some back-and-forth with all of you, either as a group, with other people as well, besides myself, to know, I, I wanna know if you, as Board members, know how many teachers are doing things that you are not aware of. I mean, how would you find that out? Because, and there are plenty of school districts where this is happening. School districts in our area, two of them are Council Rock, and they're Bucks County, but Council Rock and Pensbury. And, yes, Wanda, I see you looking, you're looking great, by the way, I love your hair. You're welcome. You look so much younger. You're welcome. It's just, I wanna go where you go, so I can look younger, too. But anyway, I, this is happening. It's real, and it's happening. You may or may not be aware of it, and I think if you're not aware of it, you really do need to get on board. Because there is no way, I don't care what science you think you're using, you really, truly cannot turn a person from a man to a woman, or vice versa. And a lot of these boys, actually, it's more girls who wanna transgender, but the boys who want to, or say they want to, that's a lot of times an excuse, just like the men in the prison system, where they're saying, "I identify as a woman," and then they put them in the women's prisons, and the women are getting raped. That is documented. That's a fact. So, when do you start looking at it and saying, "Okay, this is a man, and he wants to pretend he's a woman, so he can go to the safe space where the women are?" And that's what they're doing, they're getting away with it. The other thing is, I think we spoke about it, you and I, Tina, about Title IX. These guys are getting into women's sports. Why did women fight so hard for Title IX, so that they could have their own competitions? And now they're being infiltrated, and they're being defeated by these people who think or say that they're girls, when they're not. And even if they have it cut off, or whatever, they're still always gonna be stronger and faster than the girls. It's a totally unfair thing to do to women. You know, all of this is misogyny. The only thing worse than a misogynistic man is a misogynistic woman. And a misogynistic woman is one who agrees with this transgendering nonsense of boys to girls, just so they could get into where girls are and invade their sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Braccio. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment? Mr. Lanier?
Jason Lanier, Lansdale. I'll, I'll start off where Ms. Braccio left off. What, why the, the pride flag? Why the celebration? I mean, the first three letters there, right? The, this is settled in the United States, but why are we, why are we celebrating somebody's sexual preferences? I mean, I, I have people in my family, I have relatives, I have people in, in, in the community that I know. It's not an issue. The people who seem to be promoting this are people that, why are we talking about a third-person's sexual preferences? I don't understand. And your school, I got, received this in, in the mail, in the email. Why did, why did this be, why was this handed out at elementary schools? It says, "Born this way," and it's a pride flag. I, I don't understand what the educational benefit to this is. This isn't benefiting anybody. And go further, the transgender thing, are you, have you guys looked at the scientific data on this? And I'm not talking about what the, the political argument is with, with Glisten and the Trevor Project, because that's not scientific data. Those are surveys. Surveys of opinion that aren't scientifically collected. I'm talking about what happened in Sweden. And by the way, do you know what Sweden, Finland, UK, Norway, just last week, they all have in common? They're not doing this anymore. And they're not doing it because they found it to be highly detrimental to kids. Sweden, who has socialized medicine, tracked this from starting a kid on, on affirming to transition, if they could go that far. It resulted in a nearly twenty-time suicide rate. So, why, as a school district, do we want even pretend this is a good idea? These are personal matters. This is a psychological problem that kids are going through. You can further look at that data, and I'm, I'm gonna give you a little bit of, of pullout from, from that actual information that Sweden put together. They found, they found that ninety-five point six percent of those kids that have gender dysphoria and are, have affirmation, actually suffer from a different psychological issue at the same time, co-morbidity. And what they found out is, those problems aren't being underlying, they're not being served on those levels. It could be anorexia, it could be ADHD, it could be, it could be any number of different psychological ailments. And those aren't being served. And this is what's happening. And it's resulting in a huge suicide rate. So, they said, "No more. We are not doing this." And it's not because they're haters, it's not because they, they, they have a religious calling to, to make this some other thing. This has to do with the life of the people involved. And this is not something to be taken lightly, and throwing a flag up there and saying, "Hey, we're doing this for benefit of the kids," is, that's just not true.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
You guys should reverse your presentation.
Thank you.
What you're doing on this.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time?
Kathy Heath, Upper Guana Township. Basically, just a few things. I saw that, I know there's a lot going on about the whole new building, or whatever, for the high school. My concern is, you have one plan, which looks like it's kinda like you're, let's just get it done, and you're pie in the sky, all the bells and whistles. You kinda need to start looking at, instead of just bells and whistles, what is really needed to educate the kids? What is it that we really need to do? And some of the things that I saw, I don't know if this is part of your plan, but the windows, in the, from what I saw, the windows in the hall, from the hallway into the classrooms, that is going to mess with your special ed population to no end. And there are kids who are going to decide that that's the best place to go, to mess around and try to distract those kids, all right? I lived through teaching in a building during, during construction. I know it's no fun. But I know it's necessary. But you need to look at what you're doing also, because quite honestly, the building I worked at, they decided drywall in the hallways was a smart idea. Guess what? It wasn't, and it was an expensive process to fix. So, you need to talk to your special education families, the stu-, the parents, and the teachers, to see what, what is really needed to make it the best place. And some of that seating also, you need to realize that not every student is the same size or shape, so it, some of that seating is not gonna work for some of your student population. And it's not gonna necessarily work for some of your special needs population. Those are things you really need to take a good, hard look at, because from where I stand, you haven't fully looked at that for the past thirteen, thirteen-plus years. You need to start doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Healy. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? If not, then we can move on to our presentation of the juvenile justice system.
Yep.
Or Dr. Waters.
Yes. Okay, so tonight, we do have with us an Assistant District Attorney, who's gonna do a presentation on the Juvenile Justice Diversion Initiative in Montgomery County. It's something that we do see alignment with our vision, when you think about promoting respect, responsibility, collaboration, opportunity for student voice, dignity, when you're disciplining students. And so, tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Pete Nicholson to come up and do the honors of making the introduction for our guest speakers. And I also, while you're walking to the mic, just wanna wish Dr. Bauer and his son good luck. He's actually coaching his son's championship baseball game tonight, so he is sorry he couldn't be here, so I'm doing my best to do what he does.
Dr. Waters, thank you very much, I will say. I guess his first call to the game was to bring in the pinch hitter, and you're doing a, a pretty good job here, so thank you. Good, good evening, everyone. As Dr. Waters said, we have a special presentation this evening. Over the past month or so, we've had a couple of preliminary meetings with a team of folks that are here with us today. Assistant District Attorney Angela Bell, Chief Bendig from Montgomery Township Police Department, as well as Chief Nolan from Upper Marion, have met with us at a couple of junctures over the past month to speak about a juvenile justice diversion program that we are contemplating and discussing launching at North Penn High School for the fall. So, at this point in time, we felt it was necessary to bring it before all of you, to bring you in on the conversations we've had, and let you see a little bit of what Ms. Bell and the team have brought to us at North Penn High School. So, with that, I'll introduce Assistant District Attorney Bell and her team.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you for having us. So, Chief Bendig, Chief Nolan, and I are part of a team of Montgomery County juvenile justice stakeholders. We are currently implementing a pilot program. We currently have three other Montgomery County school districts that are participating. But basically, what I wanted to talk to you tonight about was the bigger picture, which is that we, in Montgomery County, in terms of juvenile justice, are looking at how we can expand the use of diversion to keep more juveniles out of the juvenile justice system. And as we look at identifying as many summary and some misdemeanor offenses that can possibly be diverted through the District Attorney's Youth Aid Panel Program, at the same time that we're doing that on the juvenile justice side, we are looking for school districts to also begin to identify code of conduct violations that you normally would suspend, expel, or refer to law enforcement. We're asking the school districts that are participating in our pilot program to implement a youth aid panel diversion program in the schools that models the District Attorney's program. Because we already know that school districts, referrals to ju-, to law enforcement contribute to juveniles going into the juvenile justice system, and we think that if we can have some diversion and intervention in schools, then it's gonna reduce the number of kids that end up in the District Attorney's Office. I would like Chief Nolan and Chief Bendig to talk a little bit about juvenile crime in general, and how over, what, the last five years or so, we have seen an increase in the types of things that are being sent into the juvenile justice system, and how we wanna encourage more entities in the system to divert. I'll let Chief Nolan talk about that.
Okay. I would, I got involved with Angela Bell eight or nine years ago now, when we looked at diversion in Upper Marion Township, and how much, how many cases were going into the juvenile justice system. And we were able to expand the youth aid program, we were able to use it more in Upper Marion Township, and, and bring more kids into the youth aid panel, where I think they get a lot more personal touches from the panel, panel members. I know some of our panel members even go into mentoring with some of the kids, and we just see a lot more great stories about better outcomes for our juveniles who get involved in, in some type of activity that brings, that could bring them into the juvenile justice system, or into law enforcement, and they're handled at a different level. So, we've seen much, much more progress that way. And unfortunately, we have seen an increase in more violent crime in, in some of our juveniles. And we've talked about that, that by having a youth aid panel, it also gives us that added benefit of putting the, the true juvenile justice system for those who are committing serious violent crimes that we need to deal with, instead of every crime going into the juvenile justice system. So, I think for, for Upper Marion, that would be the biggest point that we see. Thank you.
And Chief Bendig, I'd like Chief Bendig to talk a little bit about, from a law enforcement perspective, and with him being one of the townships connected with your school district, how you see this benefiting the school district.
Good evening. So, a few years ago, Angela approached most of the chiefs of police in Montgomery County about this initiative, really utilizing youth aid panel to its fullest extent. We're very fortunate, in our county, we've had, pretty much every department has really embraced this program. It's been wonderful. I think we found that we're really, again, we're utilizing the resources in an appropriate manner. Departments are very rarely referring people to the criminal justice system. So, it's, it's something that I think that it's been wonderful for us to utilize from a law enforcement perspective, and I think that it would be a wonderful opportunity for us to utilize this in our district specifically.
Thank you. So, the slide that I have up here, I just wanted to basically show you how, on the juvenile justice side, if you look on the left-hand side, within the juvenile justice system, when students or juveniles commit an offense, they're going to be normally referred by law enforcement to the District Attorney's Youth Aid Panel Program, which I run for the District Attorney. Or, if it's not eligible, it's gonna go into the juvenile justice system, either juvenile probation, or the juvenile court. The consent decree is actually a level of diversion within the system, or they may be petitioned and have to appear before court. On the school district side, the school discipline side, you guys have a code of conduct. When there's violations, you typically, there would be detention, suspension, expulsion, or referring to law enforcement. What we're looking for everybody to do now, on my side, we are not only looking for law enforcement to continue to refer kids when it, when it, when the offense and the child is eligible. We're looking for law enforcement to continue to refer cases to the youth aid panel program. But we are also looking for district justices to utilize the youth aid panel program more. And the District Attorney's Office is also entertaining cases that are already in juvenile court. We will consider some of those for diversion. So, we are actually pulling cases back out of the system and allowing kids to have an opportunity for diversion. And what we are looking for, the three school districts that we already have in the pilot program, and hopefully, North Penn would join them, what we're looking for you to do is to take some of the code of conduct violations that you normally would suspend, expel, or refer to law enforcement, we want you to identify some of those that you are willing to refer to your in-school youth aid panel program, that would be run by school district staff, trained by me, so that we can see if we can reduce the number of suspensions. Certainly, we wanna reduce your expulsions, and definitely, we are looking for you to be able to reduce your referrals to the juvenile justice system. When people ask us about why it's so important that we do what we're doing on the juvenile justice system side and bring schools into it, is because when children are involved in the juvenile justice system, their education is interrupted. When kids are in juvenile court, when they're dealing with juvenile probation, when they're in a police department, their education is interrupted. And you guys already know, when they are suspended, when you expel them, when you refer them to law enforcement, they're not in class, they're not getting their education. And what we're looking to do with this is, not only keep kids out of the juvenile justice system, keep them from having records that would interfere with college, the military jobs, we wanna set kids up for success by making sure they have every opportunity to get their education and have a bright future. So, we are really hoping, Pen, North Penn, you're, you're the biggest school district in Montgomery County, so I, I really am looking forward to working with this school district. I expect that you will set the standard for what is possible with the school-based youth aid panel program. So, we're, we had a couple of very good meetings with your staff, with administration, and so we are really looking forward to working with you guys to see if we can really put a dent in some of the referrals to the juvenile justice system. And we're happy to take any questions, if you have questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Hello. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate you presenting information about this and consideration of a partnership. I am wondering, you, so you mentioned the youth aid panel, has trained, trained staff members on, on their, how, about how many are on there?
You mean, with the other school districts?
Yes.
Or with the District Attorney's Youth Aid Panel Program?
No, with the other districts. I'm just curious what that looks like.
Okay. So, we have Abington, Sheltonham, and Upper Marion are participating in the pilot program. Abington runs their youth aid panel. They have, I think, probably five staff members who sit on their panel, that see the kids. They see their kids after school. They identify their code of conduct violations that would be their eligibility criteria, the kinds of offenses that they will refer to the program. Sheltonham, again, probably has the same amount, probably five or six staff members, and they see their kids during the school day. It works better for them. Sheltonham is actually planning, in the fall, to run more panels. And again, they created their own, they identified their own eligibility criteria, the things that they were willing to refer to the program. And Upper Marion does, did the same thing.
So is the idea in, in those programs that whatever the offenses were that they've identified?
Mm-hmm.
They, instead of calling law enforcement, they refer to their internal youth aid panel?
Yes.
And settle it?
That way.
Internally.
Yes.
So the student never, it never really involves law enforcement within the school? There isn't a law enforcement person that sits on that youth aid panel?
No, no.
Okay.
The programs model the district attorney's youth aid panel program. The district attorney's youth aid panel program that I'm the director of is run by community volunteers. I have about 28 panels across Montgomery County that are manned by close to 150 volunteers. The youth aid panel program, the foundation of it is balanced and restorative justice. So what we look to do with the help of community volunteers is to give children, and I'm very intentional with my language, when I say children, they are children, they are not mini criminals. And our intent with the youth aid panel program is to give them an opportunity to take responsibility for the mistakes they make, but also, in our youth aid panel program, they have an opportunity to give back to the community, take responsibility for their mistake, address some of the causes for the decisions they made. And then my plan with the district attorney's youth aid panel program is always for kids to leave us in a better state than when they came. I tell all of my volunteers, I expect you to meet this child where they're at. We want to not only address the mistake they made that brought them to us, but we want to plant seeds so that they have long-term success. And what we hope to do with the school-based youth aid panel programs is to have you, again, reduce referrals to law enforcement, but we also want to see you reduce your suspensions and expulsions by diverting some of those code of conduct violations to your own in-house youth aid panel program. So that you can achieve that same objective with the children, which is have them take responsibility for the mistake that they make. It's an opportunity to also address the issues that may have caused them to make the mistake, and then you want to plant that seed so we don't see them again, and that they are able to get their education, which is what they're in North Penn High School for.
Just one last question. Oh, sorry. Just one last question. In the districts where you're at, are they seeing a decrease, a percentage decrease? Or have they been able to look at that data to see if they're seeing a decrease in the number of suspensions or expulsions?
We're, we're just starting to, to begin to look at that. Most, the three districts launched between November and January, they all really just launched. So, we didn't really have a lot of time. So, next year is really when I'm going to be looking to get, you know, really data that's really going to tell me. But I will say, when I met with the panel chairpersons for Abington and for Sheltonham, the staff like it. They think that it is a good addition to the school with the kinds of offenses that are being referred to them. Of course, you know, kids are vaping, so they're seeing that type of thing, fights. They're seeing the kind of things that, I'll be honest with you, not only do the juvenile court judges in Montgomery County, but also the district attorney, has noted over the last couple of years, that they're seeing things come to juvenile court, come to the district attorney's office, that frankly should not be there. The juvenile court judges want everybody, including school districts, to think about diversion, utilize diversion, because there's just too many things going into the system that just frankly don't have to be. A lot of your school fights, I know that you have to maintain safety of your building, I know that that's paramount, but if you have a mutually combatant fight between two kids, there's no serious bodily injury, there's no weapons, there is no reason why that should not be dealt with in-house. That's what we're looking for, that type of thing. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. I was going to ask for some examples of what the code of conduct violations would, what kind of code of conduct violations would generally qualify. So fighting is one, is, are there any other common ones that you see that are getting sent to the district attorney's office that you think should not be?
So, if, if vaping tobacco.
That gets sent to the district attorney's office?
So, kids that are vaping marijuana?
Yeah, okay.
Are going to end up with me. But if you have kids and it's against, it's a violation of your code of conduct for them to have the vape pens, for them to be vaping tobacco in the building, I think I'd rather you keep that in-house. Because I am going to get the ones where they're vaping marijuana. That's what law enforcement calls me about. That's appropriate to come to the district attorney's office. Tobacco, you can handle.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can you speak, I'm sorry, can you speak to the parents' involvement, their, the collaboration with them at all?
Yes. So, just like with the district attorney's youth aid panel, parents have to sign off. They have to agree that they're going to have their child accept this diversion instead of an alternative punishment. So, if it's the district attorney's youth aid panel program that law enforcement is trying to refer a juvenile to, parents have to sign off. If they say, "No, thank you, we don't want diversion," then it's going to go into juvenile court. In the school setting, you're going to get the sign off of the parents. They can either accept the youth aid panel for their juvenile, or they can accept whatever your regular school discipline would be, suspension, expulsion, or calling the police.
What, what would be some examples of what would be the consequence from the youth aid panel? Like, instead of?
So, the way that the youth aid panel works is when juveniles are referred to the program, the panel of volunteers, or in your staff, it would be your panel of school staff, gives them, according to the offense and their own individual circumstances, they are given what we call a resolution. It's a list of tasks that they have to complete. And as long as they complete those tasks, then they can exit the program and get the diversion. So their resolutions can include, again, depending on the offense, apology letters, essays, community service, it depends. They will adapt that resolution to the offense that's been committed and the child's individual circumstances. I'm making a point of saying that because a lot of times when kids come to us, we have to think about why they did what they did. What led to the poor choices that they make? And so that's why for the district attorney's youth aid panel program, we have a variety of community-based programs that we can also require them to attend. For example, if it's retail theft, we have providers who do retail theft classes, we have anger management classes, they can be required to attend. If alcohol or marijuana is an issue, we have providers who, they can go and deal with that. And so those are the kind of things that can also be added to that resolution, depending on what's going on with that child, or what type of offense they committed. And I do want you to know, for the school-based youth aid panel programs, all of the community services and programs that we provide in the county-wide YAP, I'm going to provide to the school-based YAP. We also provide case management services for youth who are at risk for any reason of, if we think that they may have trouble completing the program, we can also assign case managers to support them through that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell. Dr. Campbell?
Thank you for sharing all this good information with us, Assistant District Attorney Bell. You talked about positioning these students for future success, and I know you just started in the school districts, but can you share with us some of the success stories from the ones who have been involved in the youth aid panels that you've already had?
Well, I think that the success that we definitely can say we've had right now is the fact that every, in, every referral to the school-based youth aid panel program has kept kids from being suspended or expelled, or being referred to law enforcement. So that right there is a success, because like I said, my ultimate goal is I want kids in class. I don't want them at home, doing nothing, getting in more trouble. I don't want them expelled from your district, and I definitely don't want them in my office. So I think those are probably the primary successes. But, but can I take your question and add to it to say, one of the things that I've talked to the three school districts about is, again, when you make these referrals, just like I tell the volunteers in the district attorney's program, meet this child where they're at. So when you, in the school district YAP, give them a resolution, and let's say that a kid was disrespectful to a teacher, let's say they cursed a teacher out, right? That definitely should be referred to your school YAP program. You shouldn't be sending a kid to juvenile court because they cursed out a teacher. Yes, teachers should be respected, but you refer something like that. So let's say that the panel tells the kid, "You need to write Ms. Smith an apology letter." And when they get the apology letter, every fifth word is misspelled, and they can't put a grammatically correct sentence together. What does that tell us? That means the English teacher needs to get called in, right? That means this child may need a tutor. That means somebody needs to meet with mom. Maybe mom does not realize that her ninth grader cannot write an apology letter and spell everything correctly, or put a grammatically correct sentence together. So this program is also giving school districts an opportunity to get a peek into where kids are, right? Any other questions?
Yes, I think we're going to go, Christian, do you want?
Defer.
Just go around.
Go that way.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Assistant District Attorney Bell and Chiefs for educating us on, on this program. A few questions, just, and I'm sure we'll be talking about this in Safe Schools, and we'll drill down some more, but assuming this is based on some evidence-based models or other research elsewhere, are there any particular places in the state or elsewhere that, that we're modeling this on?
Oh, there are a number of counties across Pennsylvania that utilize the youth aid panel programs. Like I said, the, the research behind it is balanced and restorative justice, which most juvenile probation departments utilize, and, which is creating an atmosphere, like I said, where children are not in a, a setting where they feel like they're in court, there are no police officers there in uniform with guns, but it's an opportunity, again, for them to take accountability for their mistakes, but at the same time, have the support of the community, and in your case, that community is the school community, to address what they've done, but also to build competency. And when I say that, I mean, just like I said, it's a chance for us to build them up, to address issues that may be driving their behavior, and, and get them headed in the right direction.
And that's, I really appreciate learning about the case management aspect. So would that support be coming from the county for the school youth aid panels? For that case management?
So, the, the case management services that we offer to kids refer to the district attorney's youth aid panel program, I will make that available to you through grant funding. So there'll be no cost to the school district if your kids need the case management services.
And, and full disclosure, I worked with the Wachtels back in the early 90s.
I did hear you.
I worked with the Wachtel, Ted Wachtel and others, Balanced Restorative Justice in the early 90s.
Okay.
So I had my start in school-based juvenile probation, one of the first programs in Bucks County, so.
Yep.
And used to work with Chief Custer way back in the day here.
I knew Chief Custer.
Yeah.
So, so you have, you have some background.
Right, well, and started in youth diversion and youth aid panels in the early 90s. But one, one of the questions I have is, does this match up with informal adjustments as well? Is that something that students will, will have that opportunity for, or does this?
Well, the informal adjustment is a piece, if they do end up in the system, the informal adjustments is something that's offered by juvenile probation. So like I said, it's actually, if they have to go into the system, even once they go into the system, there are more opportunities for diversion to keep them from ending up in front of a judge. And an informal adjustment is an opportunity within the system for diversion as well.
And that's where I just want to highlight for the community, that there's an aspect of this that's about responsiveness. And when our court systems, when they're overwhelmed with a lot of the low-level misdemeanors and other offenses that really don't rise to that level, it creates an accountability that's much more prompt within the schools. And that helps overall with the culture, because there's accountability that maybe teachers or staff see when an incident happens, or other students. And that, that begins to actually change, you know, the climate within our schools. So, having it also be based locally and on a better timeline with the right standards can make a real difference, because it's about accountability at juvenile justice, protecting public safety, making sure that taxpayer savings are also protected. You know, there, there were studies, Vanderbilt University in the 2000s had a study that if you, if you invest in programs like diversion, you create taxpayers, which contribute to society, as opposed to, if you don't make that diversion, they're expelled. Once someone is on probation, which is the, the typical hammer, right, that most juvenile justice systems use, then you're, you're more likely to increase the risk, that you're not going to create someone who is contributing to society, but now society has to pay for, whether that's incarceration, other social services moving forward. And so that's why this type of program of, you know, explaining this for our community is very important, because it will also ultimately improve not only protecting public safety, but the outcomes for families, youth in our communities. You know, we had an example a couple of years ago, in, in which it was two separate tracks, right? We, we had the district attorney's office, months and months later, after a school issue was, we were using some Balanced Restorative Justice, it seemed like there were two different paths. And this is something that brings them together now to help our community and those families. So, really appreciate that. I want to finish by asking the Chiefs, with all due respect, and make sure, they got their ties on tonight, I want to get them some, some camera time. But, and, and thank you, Chief, for your explanation. In your professional opinion, what you know about this, and, and Chief Bendig, I know you also, I believe you represent all the chiefs in the Montgomery County Association as well?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, okay. Just recently.
I've passed that baton.
Recently past president, Chief Bendig. I just want to have your opinion for, for the community and to educate this board, and Chief Nolan as well, that you are confident this is not putting the community or our schools at any higher risk, and that these are low-level offenses that are going to be, you know, looked at by the youth aid panels. Let the community be confident that this isn't changing the equation, this isn't some risky experiment, but something that you believe will make a real difference in our schools for safety and our students.
Sure. You've implemented, so.
And I would say, from, from Upper Marion's standpoint, and I've been chief since 2012, and in about 2013 and 14, we got heavily into the youth aid panel and using it a lot more. We have not seen some dramatic increase in, or, or some bad, bad things happening in public safety. What we've seen is the, the children go to the right system. And I would use this, so my officers in the past, they made a retail theft arrest, or whatever the arrest was, and they bring the person, the juvenile in, they just don't have the time, you know? So they're going to issue a citation, they're going to send it through the system. Nobody gets involved in that. Nobody gets involved in that child. They'd love, the officers would love to get involved in the child, but they don't. The next call is out there, the next thing is going on. With this Youth Aid Panel, knowing that they're going to take it in front of volunteers from our community who have a vested interest. They're in our community, they want to do this. And they put a whole lot more time and effort into that child. So now the child does get that issue and potentially will not continue down that path they were going in. So as you said, we took somebody out of potentially going in the criminal justice system and made them a more productive member of society. So I would say that would be a big thing. I've been doing this for 38 years now, you know? I've been in houses where I know that I've arrested the parent as a child, and now I'm there for their child. And I have to wonder myself, if we had these programs back then, would that whole family dynamic have changed if that person who's now a parent would have had some help earlier on? That's what I would add.
One other thing I'd like to add is just the fact that we've worked with the administration of the district. And I think that we have an outstanding partnership. And I think that just the initial meetings that we've had, I think we can come to some very clear, common grounds. And again, I think that they have the best interest of the student population at hand. And again, I think that we are all on the same page with this. So I don't see how this could not work in our district, honestly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kocan.
Can I just follow up on what you said? And maybe the Chiefs want to weigh in on this. We had a meeting today, earlier today, with representatives from every police department in Montgomery County. We touched on a little bit of this. But one of the things, the points that we were trying to make was our juvenile justice system has a limited amount of resources. We just have to be honest about that, right? We all have to make sure that those limited resources are available for the children with the highest need. Unfortunately, we're all watching the same news. We know that we have children across this whole region who are committing felonies, who are committing crimes that are way beyond the Youth Aid Panel Program. We need our juvenile justice system resources to be available for them. Some of the things that you may see in your high school or that police officers may see on a daily basis, many of those things. We're not trying to belittle anything, especially anything where there is a victim. We take victims' circumstances and their rights into consideration. But there are many things that children are doing that can be dealt with outside of the system. And that's what we're talking about. You want to comment on that? We had all of these representatives today.
Yeah, I think a lot of, I think what Angela's alluding to is when we see the juveniles that are, when we have a better opportunity to handle their situation. Police departments are scary places. When you bring a juvenile into a police department, no matter how well you try to make that, you've now indoctrinated them into the system. You've made them feel like they're a criminal. Some of them wear that as a badge of honor and now try to take that path. The Youth Aid Panels that we have, they don't meet in our police department. They meet in the other side of the building, in the administrative side. So it takes a whole different feel out of that. And I think that's a big component of this, that we don't want, you know, I know the police officers in this region and in this county, and they do want to help children. They do not want to be the hammer. They would rather, as we said, deal with those serious violent crimes that we need to deal with and not be tied up on these crimes. Again, if they had the time, they would love to be the people that mentored these kids on these situations. They just don't have it on these individual situations. But our volunteers from our communities have willingly given up their time. And I can't say enough about the volunteers that we get to do this. I have some of the greatest panelists in our community that have done this for a number of years and they never give up. They continue to come and they continue to care about the children in our community and make them better.
Thank you. Mrs. Romic?
I'll try to be very brief. But we've talked a lot about high school. Is there any thought of also extending this to middle school or looking at secondary as a whole? And then I really love the kind of getting to the why, right? And getting to, so, and as a social worker by training and background, getting to that why is so critical. And then when you do have a child who is ready, right? And you've come up with a list of things they need to do, it seems like you have the services lined up. But sometimes those are community resources that there could, there may not be enough or there may be a challenge. Are you worried about community capacity for some of these outside community referrals? Is there a need for support of expansion in that area? And then if you could speak a little bit about the in-school Youth Aid Panel, with the plans that they're putting together, how many of those services are able to be provided within a school? And how, what percentage are provided in the community? And are there any challenges in accessing those services in the community? I'm sorry, that was a lot.
That's okay. We laugh because Chief Bendig and I, we get your first question every time. Every school district that we have spoken to, they say, "Sounds good, Angela. We like the idea. What about our middle school?" I understand. There's a lot going on in the middle schools across this county. And I'm going to tell you the same thing I told Shelton Ham because they really wanted me to do this in their middle schools. Let me get your high school up and running and running well, and we will figure out something for your middle school. I promise you, I promise Shelton Ham, I am going to get to the middle schools, but I want to get your high school up and running. And then we will transition something to address your middle schools. As far as my service providers, many of them, a lot of their programs, they are doing via Zoom. So we won't have transportation issues. But I'll be honest with you, I am in communication with them. As the school-based yap programs take off, we will be mindful of capacity. What I am asking the school districts that are participating is that if you have internal programs, that your panel can refer kids to use that. But if something I have is the most appropriate thing for that child or the circumstance, then we're going to use it. We're going to use it and we're going to make adoptions when we need to make adoptions. We're not there yet, but yes, I am mindful of that. We'll be in communication with our service providers. And then in terms of figuring out the why, that's why my case management staff is so important. They are masters-level social workers. And they are wonderful, not only with supporting children and getting through this program, but usually what we find is that mom needs help. And I know I'm speaking to the choir when I say, when you help mom, you help that child. So our case management staff often has to come in and address whatever challenges mom has because when she's situated, that atmosphere, that environment allows her child to thrive and be successful. Did I forget anything? Okay. This gentleman has been very patient. He had a question.
No, I.
Did I answer it already?
No, I just, when I first got on the school board, I would hear stories that issues were being handled by teachers and principals.
Mr. Rush.
And I know we since standardized.
Speak into the mic, please.
I know we since standardized that practice, that we bring them up, those issues up to a panel. And this seems like the next logical step in that. And I'm glad to see the District Attorney and the police departments working together to bring this process to the public. So I think this is great. I think this is wonderful. And thank you very much for this.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. I think Mr. Fusco has.
Just briefly, and I do actually have a question. I wasn't going to ask one, but something prompted it. But first, I just want to say, I am a teacher. I work in a neighboring district that's not implementing this at this point. And, you know, these types of offenses that you described, these are the, I think, the things that are driving teachers out of the profession, right? It's this stuff. It's the disrespect, the fighting, the vaping, the stuff that is a constant daily problem. And you'll hear from teachers a complaint that we're not doing anything about it, right? We're either sending them into, you know, home for suspension, sending them, you know, to law enforcement, or we're kind of throwing our hands up and going, what are we doing, right? We're, so I believe that this is filling a vacuum, right? That this has a potential to really start to address that because really we have seen that escalated, you know, tick up since COVID everywhere. You know, we hear it from our constituents here in North Penn. I certainly hear it in, you know, my colleagues in the lunchroom from all ends. So I do think that this is a very important program that has a lot of potential that cooperating the school district and law enforcement working together to try to, you know, get involved before we get to that pipeline, right? Before we get them into that pipeline. The only question that I have is just what is the actual, like, since you answer this question all the time, the reasoning and the logic behind starting with high school and not middle school since it is sort of a long-term perspective in what you want to see with outcomes? I would think that starting at the middle schools would actually be planting those seeds earlier and maybe easier. So I'm just curious what the logic is.
So I'm not going to say it's necessarily logical, but part of this process is looking at where your discipline, your primary discipline issues are and what they are. So we will be asking for some data to see exactly what's happening in your high school. But yes, I do see your middle school is my intervention point. That's my prevention point, so to speak. So once we identify, like, what's happening in your high school? What have you traditionally been doing about your different code of conduct violations? Then we will do prevention with the middle school. Not necessarily logical, but your high schools and most school districts really are your hotspots. That's where law enforcement, am I right?
Yeah, absolutely.
When law enforcement is brought in, they usually are coming to your high school. But I'm glad you brought up teachers, though, because we also took into consideration that hopefully this type of program creates an atmosphere where teachers feel that something is being done, that they are supported, that there's an atmosphere where they can teach, right? I think that is most present in middle schools. I think middle school teachers, from the middle school principals that I've spoken to, middle school teachers are tired. They are frustrated. So I know I have to get there because they are burning out and they need that atmosphere to change. They need to feel like something is being done, children's needs are being addressed, and that there's a safe environment so they can teach. So we're getting there.
If I can just add, I think the other part about the high school is they're at that critical age, that 15, 16, 17, where when they get to 18, they are in the adult system. We don't want to teach them how to get into the criminal justice system. And that's why it's so important. And as we all know, that are parents of teenagers, there's no magic when they turn from 17 to 18 that they all of a sudden stop making dumb mistakes. So we want to make sure that we try to hit them at that critical age.
You just ruined my day as I have a 17-year-old. And I was really counting on 18 being a big, for her, I guess not.
All right, does anyone else have any other questions? No, seeing none. Well, thank you, Assistant A.D. Bell and Chief Bendig and Chief Nolan. We appreciate your presentation this evening and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And for the board, I just want to thank you. We thought it important to bring this to you so you could have a good understanding of some of the planning that was going to be happening this summer. As you can see, we're not looking for a vote. We're not looking to move this forward. We will eventually be coming before you there looking to change the code of conduct after we've planned this out and really taken the summer to build our teams, get the training and launching, hopefully sometime September to October, trying to keep that as early in the school year as possible. So again, thank you for all the questions. Thank you for your time this evening. And we'll be obviously keeping safe schools in the know as we plan and coming back to the whole group for a final vote on the updated code of conduct at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. Okay. With that, is there any other business this evening?
Yeah, I would just like to answer a question. I was asked a public comment about why we raised the pride flag. I mean, it is Pride Month. Person's identity is not a psychological problem, right? Let's start with that. I actually took offense to that statement on behalf of the people that I know who identify as members of the LGBTQ plus community. They are still a marginalized community. We've made a lot of progress over the last five to 10 years in this country, recognizing their rights. But to say that their struggle for equality is over is just patently false, right? So why do we raise a pride flag? We do it to show them support. We do that to show them that we're allies. We do that to show them that we're here and we hear them. We are not making decisions about their identity. They are making the decisions about their identity. We are simply not going to judge them based on that, right? And that's just a symbolic way of showing that when we say that we're here for all of our students, that they are very much included in that statement. So that's your answer to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco.
And could I just add that no matter what their identity is, we just want them to know they have a right to be in this district, to be educated and trained for a future success. These kids, a lot of them have gone through suicidal thoughts and everything else. We just want them to know that we accept them and they have the right to be educated and trained. So many school districts, they do not, but here they do.
And it is tied to education because I say this all the time. You have to reach kids to teach kids. If they don't feel safe, if they don't feel welcome, then they're not going to be able to perform at their best. It's pretty much that basic.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Thank you, Dr. Lois Campbell. Are there any other comments or questions? No? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.